Good evening. Chair calls order Legislative Session Day 22-027. I would ask you all to join us in standing for the pledge, followed by the opening prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Heavenly Father, as we come together this evening, we continue to give thanks for the many blessings and gifts you've given us. We pray for your guidance and wisdom in our lives and in this council chambers this evening. Lord, tomorrow we remember the attack on our country and the lives lost and sacrifices made. The anniversary of Pearl Harbor is a constant reminder that freedom has never been free. We ask you to continue to watch over our law enforcement officers, our first responders and their families. Let us never forget the service they provide and the sacrifices that they've made for us. Lord, fill us with your grace, peace, and respect for one another. All these things we pray in your name, Lord. Amen. If I may, before we get started, over the past... Would you all please find a seat and shut that door? Over the past two weeks and throughout today, the council has received emails and phone calls concerning the status and the representative District F, Mr. Bennett. It's clear that nothing will be decided here tonight and that this issue may very well be decided in a venue other than these council chambers. Harford County embraced home rule in 1973 and adopted its charter, the Constitution of Harford County. Yesterday, all council members took an oath of office to support and defend the Constitution of the United States of America, the Constitution of the State of Maryland, and the Charter of Harford County. We take this responsibility very seriously, and you will note that on the agenda tonight will be a request to go into a closed meeting to receive a legal briefing from our attorneys concerning the issue of whether a sitting council member can simultaneously serve as a Harford County Public School employee under the Charter Section 207, which establishes the qualifications of a council member. The council will perform our due diligence in this matter. Thank you. Agenda number five, or excuse me, number four, presentation of proclamations, we have none. Agenda number five, consideration of petitions, applications, appointments, and nominations. Council appointments, council vice president may have a motion.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion.
Mr. Riley.
I would like to nominate Tony G., or Tony G. Giordano, as our vice president.
May I have a second?
Mr. President, I'll second that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Pennman. It's moved in second to approve the appointment of Councilman Jan Giordano as vice president for the term December 2022 until December 2023. Is there any discussion? Ms. Dixon.
Mr. President.
Aye.
Mr. Guthrie.
Aye.
Mr. Pennman.
Aye.
Mr. Giordano.
Aye.
Mr. Riley.
Aye.
Mrs. Boyle Sodles.
Aye.
Mr. Bennett.
Aye.
There being seven votes in the affirmative, zero in the negative, the appointment is hereby approved. Council Personnel Committee may have a motion.
Council President, I'd like to make a motion.
Mr. Pennman.
I make a motion for the following appointments to the Council Personnel Committee: Council President Pat Vincenti, Council Vice President Tony Jan Giordano, Council Member Deion Guthrie, and alternate Council Member Jim Riley.
May I have a second? It's been moved in second to approve the appointments of Vincenti, Giordano, Guthrie, and Riley. Is there any discussion? Ms. Dixon.
Mr. President.
Aye.
Mr. Guthrie.
Aye.
Mr. Pennman.
Aye.
Mr. Giordano.
Aye.
Mr. Riley.
Aye.
Mrs. Boyle Sodles.
Aye.
Mr. Bennett.
Aye.
There being seven votes in the affirmative, zero in the negative, the appointments are hereby approved. 2022-2023 Mako Legislative Committee Council Representative and Alternate, may I have a motion?
Council President.
Mr. Giordano.
I move to approve Councilman Pennman as council representative and Jessica Blake as alternative.
May I have a second?
Aye.
Thank you, Ms. Sodles.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Ms. Dixon.
Mr. President.
Aye.
Mr. Guthrie.
Aye.
Mr. Pennman.
Aye.
Mr. Giordano.
Aye.
Mr. Riley.
Aye.
Mrs. Boyle Sodles.
Aye.
Mr. Jacob.
Aye.
There being seven votes in the affirmative and zero in the negative, the appointments are hereby approved. Executive appointments, department directors, council, if there are no objections, we will move the following executive appointments together.
Mr. President.
Mr. Riley.
I'd like to pull the HR Director out of the group so I can ethically abstain.
Thank you. May I have a motion?
I, Council President.
Mr. Giordano.
I move to approve Robert McCord, Director of Administration, Robert Sandlish, Director of Treasury, Joseph Seemack, Director of Department of Public Works, Tiffany Stevens, Director of Human Resources, or am I pulling that out?
You're pulling that out.
Pulling that out, okay, fine. Scratch Tiffany Stevens, Director of Human Resources, Joseph Seemack, Director of Department of Public Works, Nicholas Kuba, Director of Information and Technology, Barbara Richardson, Director of Community and Economic Development, Paul Magnus, Director of Parks and Recreation, Richard Truitt, Director of Inspections, Licenses and Permits, and Richard Ayers, Acting Director of Emergency Services.
May I have a second?
Council President, I second that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Pennman. It's been moved in second to approve all directors, stated with the exception of Ms. Stevens, Director of Human Resources. Any discussion? Ms. Dixon.
Mr. Giordano, did you have?
Yeah, just a brief thing. We've worked with Robbie Sandlish in the last four years, extremely competent, glad to see him back, also worked for Joe Seemack, Director of Department of Public Works. Rick Ayers, I've worked with him, I know he's acting director, but very astute in what he does, and Rob McCord, I've known him for a while, and his extensive background certainly is a great asset to the incoming administration, so I just wanted to make a little bit of remarks on that, and I know we can't talk about Tiffany, and I'll talk about her later. So, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Ms. Dixon.
Mr. President.
Aye.
Mr. Guthrie.
Aye.
Mr. Pennman.
Aye.
Mr. Giordano.
Aye.
Mr. Riley.
Aye.
Mrs. Boyle Sodles.
Aye.
Mr. Jacob.
Aye.
Mr. Jacob.
I know, I was gonna say.
I'm used to being around five-year-olds.
They're with me.
There being seven votes in the affirmative, zero in the negative, the directors are hereby approved. Now may I have a motion on Ms. Stevens?
Council President.
Mr. G., Tony G.
I make a motion to appoint Tiffany Stevens, Director of Human Resources.
May I have a second?
Council President, I second that.
Thank you, Mr. Pennman.
If I may, is to approve the appointment.
Yes.
Counting executive council action.
Yes. Thank you. Mr. Kearney. It's been moved in second to approve Ms. Stevens as a Director of Human Resources. Is there any discussion? Mr. Giordano.
Again, Tiffany's been in that position for a couple of years. She, before that, she was the Deputy Director. I've talked to Ms. Stevens many times on various issues, obviously being in the insurance industry and with, I get a lot of phone calls about benefits and everything. I've always talked to Tiffany or Jim Richardson before. She's very professional, very knowledgeable, she's moved some stuff around for us, saved us some money, so I'm glad to see her back, and I think she'll do a fabulous job as she's done before.
Agreed. Anyone else?
Mr. Resident.
Mr. Bennett.
I just wanted to say, you know, even without much discussion, I know we all looked at the resumes that were put before us, I found them to all be highly impressive, and so even with lack of discussion, I know we all took a lot of time to think this over before we did it.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Anyone else? Ms. Dixon.
Mr. President.
Aye.
Mr. Guthrie.
Aye.
Mr. Pennman.
Aye.
Mr. Giordano.
Aye.
Mr. Riley.
Interesting.
Mrs. Boyle Sodles.
Aye.
Mr. Bennett.
Aye.
There being six votes in the affirmative, one abstention, the appointment is hereby And on the agenda it has deputy directors, but there are the deputy directors being looked at tonight. Agenda number six, special presentations, there are none. Number seven, approval of minutes, Fall 2022 Board of Health update, October 18, 2022, zoning appeal case number 5968, John and Hazel Adair, legislative day 22-026, October 18, 2022. Are there any corrections to the minutes? There being no corrections, the minutes stand approved. Agenda item number eight, introduction and consideration of resolutions, we have no business. Introduction of bills at number nine, we have no business. Number 10, introduction and consideration of amendments, we have no business. Eleven, call for final reading of bills, we have no business. Twelve, enrollment of bills, nothing. Thirteen, unfinished business, we have nothing. Fourteen, new business, council request. Each council member has been provided with a copy of a retainer agreement with a law firm, Rifkin Wiener and Livingston LLC. The council has previously used this firm for help with complex legal issues, and may I have a motion to approve the request.
I'll see law firm.
Thank you. May I have a second?
I second it.
Thank you, Mr. Pennman. Is there any discussion? Ms. Dixon.
Mr. President.
Aye.
Mr. Guthrie.
Aye.
Mr. Pennman.
Aye.
Mr. Giordano.
Aye.
Mr. Riley.
Aye.
Mrs. Boyle Sodles.
Aye.
Mr. Bennett.
Abstain.
There being six in the positive, one abstention, is hereby approved. Also, at this time, I propose the council go into a closed session as permitted under Section 3-305A1 of the General Provisions Article of the Anecdated Code of Maryland to consult with legal counsel to obtain legal advice as permitted in Section 3-305B7. More specifically, as provided by B-305B7, I propose that we consult with our retained outside counsel, Michael Berman of Rifkin Wiener Livingston LLC, and our council attorney, Charles Kearney, to discuss and to receive legal advice about the Harford County Charter Section 207, County Code Section 4-8, the Maryland Declaration of Rights Article 35, the State Constitution and State Code, and their collective effect upon the issue of whether a sworn member of the Harford County Council can also simultaneously serve as a public employee. Public school employee, I'm sorry. May I have a motion?
Mr. President.
Mr. Guthrie.
Make a motion that we go to closed session.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Have further, a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Resident. If this passes, I'm voluntarily choosing to not participate in tonight's closed session based on the guidance of my outside attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Anyone else? Ms. Dixon.
Mr. President.
Aye.
Mr. Guthrie.
Aye.
Mr. Pennman.
Aye.
Mr. Giordano.
Aye.
Mr. Riley.
Aye.
Mrs. Boyle Sodles.
Aye.
Mr. Bennett.
Abstain.
Six in the positive, one abstention, is hereby approved. County Council will now go into closed session as permitted under Sections 3-305B7 of the General Provisions Article of the Anecdated Code of Maryland. After the closed session, the council will return to open session and thereafter continue on to complete the agenda items still remaining. A copy of the closing statement is available for any person present if they want one and can be obtained from the council administrator. Council will now recess this public session and reconvene in closed session upstairs in the council conference room, and following the closed session, the council will reconvene in these chambers to continue its legislative session. Thank you. Thank you again for your patience. We're gonna actually go to agenda item number 17, comments and input from attending citizens. Ms. Dixon, do we have anyone signed up?
We do, Mr. President. We have 15 this evening, I believe.
Okay. As I always do, I'm gonna remind you of, be mindful of your time and be respectful of this room and everyone in it. Call your first speaker. Good evening, ma'am. Name an address for the record.
Good evening. My name is Amy Nelson, and my address is on file, but I'm...
No, ma'am, I need your address.
Oh, you need the address.
Yes, ma'am.
715 North Juniata Street, Havitt Grace, Maryland.
Thank you, ma'am.
Which is District F. So, I'm speaking tonight to say hello, greetings to all our new and returning council members. Prompted to speak tonight based on yesterday's little stunt, I thought it was very disrespectful to not only Councilman Jacob Bennett, but also to the voters of District F to not include him in the public swearing-in ceremony. I found that very disappointing. So, I understand, based on information today and the discussions earlier, that Councilman Bennett was excluded based on his employment with Harford County Public Schools. However, it's my understanding that Councilman Bennett received legal advice about this potential issue prior to even beginning his campaign. He did his homework, he got legal counsel, and understood that it is acceptable, fine for him to be on the council and be a public school teacher. It was also never a secret that he's been a public school teacher. It's been on all his campaign materials, all his flyers, every person who voted for him, which is the majority of the voters in District F, although it was a close race, every voter who voted for him voted knowing full well that he is a teacher. And there's a precedent for a teacher being on the council. As an alumni of Aberdeen High School, I remember when Coach Slutsky was our teacher and also served on the council, and my understanding is he did a good job on both. So, I don't see a problem there, but I do see a problem with what I feel like is an attempt to disenfranchise the voters of District F. And I just wanted to express that, so thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Good evening, ma'am. Name an address, please.
Crystal Ruffinott, 700 Heston Court, Bel Air, Maryland. Yesterday, one of your newly elected members was excluded from a ceremony that you all took part in. It's my understanding it wasn't your decision to make, but you were aware that Jacob would be excluded. It's easy to advocate for citizens whose views that you share. It takes leadership to ensure that others are heard. You can't serve well when members of your community aren't heard. The county executive's decision to exclude Jacob did not just impact Jacob. Consider the impact on many here who elected him. We are your constituents. We may not be from your geographical district, but we are all Harford citizens. Your decisions impact us. How you treat people matters, and exclusion can be very hurtful. Jacob is your colleague, and whether or not you agree with him, he is one of you. You may not have made the decision about who would have attended the ceremony, but did you reach out to him when you knew? Did you know he was sworn in during a separate ceremony elsewhere? Did you try to learn more before? I would consider myself very novice in terms of legal matters. I was able to educate myself very quickly yesterday when I learned all of this. You will have differences with Jacob, but I encourage you to consider how you will approach working with him. Working with those who are different makes you better. Is it more challenging? Sure, but more often than not, you will come out on the other side with a more well-developed solution that meets the needs of more of your constituents. I ask that you reflect on what you may have done differently leading up to your ceremonial activities yesterday. Did your response show value to all the citizens of Harford or just those who are like you? If you were in Jacob's position, would you have described your response as supportive, nonexistent, or exclusionary? Thank you, Jacob, for your commitment to the citizens of Harford County. You will do great work on this council, and we thank you for staying the course.
Thank you, ma'am.
Janine Lacor, followed by Ken Shannon.
Before Ms. Lacor speaks, you know, I hate to say this, but I can't have any outburst in here, so please refrain from applauding, and I know how emotional it is. Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening. Janine Lacor, 1820 Park Beach Drive, Perryman. I want to welcome all the new council members, and in particular, our newly-elected District F Representative Jacob Bennett. Thanks to each of you for your service to the community. As a newly-elected governing body at all levels in the county, there's been a variety of lofty goals communicated to the citizens of Harford County. Create well-paying jobs, preserve and protect open space, focus on the Route 40 corridor, highlight Harford heritage, update the master plan and zoning. These are all relevant goals to the Perryman Peninsula. Specifically, the existing county master plan was touted as being focused on the next generation and preserving our heritage, yet has isolated, ignored, and devalued property values for those unfortunate enough to live in the development ombuds. In fact, rather than using development to create wealth in our community, the county's deliberate actions have created economic disparity and discriminatory outcomes. More specifically, Perryman's household median income is 36% below that of Harford County. 18.1% of Perryman families live in poverty, more than double that of Harford County. And coincidentally, Perryman's community of color is double the percentage of Harford County. For over 30 years, our community has taken action-oriented steps for which the county has failed to take substantive action. In 1992, the 103-acre Forest Green Lake Preserve was created. This was a community-led initiative and has been the biggest accomplishment in the last 30 years. In 1997, the Perryman Wellhead Protection Plan was submitted to the county. It was not implemented. In 2000, the Perryman Traffic Study was not implemented. In 2001, the Perryman Visioning Study was not implemented. In 2008, again, another time for the Perryman community to participate in the Perryman Community Recommendations for Sustainable Growth and Quality of Life. Appropriate transportation infrastructure, not implemented. Natural and cultural preservation, not implemented. Open space, not implemented. Schools, not implemented. Recreational facilities, not implemented. Residential and commercial design standards to preserve the integrity of the community, not implemented. And in 2022, the Mitchell Farm Freight Distribution Terminal Moratorium was not implemented.
Ms. Lacor, please bring your comments to a close.
And nor was the Spazucha Road Height Monitoring System implemented. So, we do appreciate...
Thank you, ma'am. Good evening, sir. Name an address, please.
Good evening. My name is Ken Shannon. I live at 2044 Park Beach Drive in Perryman. When I signed up for the meeting today, I sent some material that I wanted to share with the council. Have you seen that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Welcome back, Mr. Vincente and Mr. Giordano, and welcome to all the new council members. I'm here to speak about unwanted and inappropriate industrial development in Perryman, specifically opposed Mitchell property development and the traffic noise and pollution that will come with it. Some background for the new council members, the Mitchell property development is a proposal that was made public a little over a year ago. Put five massive freight terminals on a historic farm in the middle of a residential community on a peninsula with a single road in and out. Five freight terminals will cover 5.2 million square feet of permeable ground next to the Bush River, will be accompanied by an approximately equal amount of impermeable parking lots and other paved surface. One of the freight terminals will be about a half mile long. That monstrosity will be surrounded by four other mega warehouses. You have in front of you a packet called Protect Perryman Peninsula Warehouse and Demographic Data Analysis. This information was presented to the county council almost one year ago, on January 18. First page of the packet shows a map of Harford County with blue circles indicating by their size the relative amount of existing freight terminals and warehouse space in various communities. Large buildings, those over 20,000 square feet are shown. Three biggest circles are Aberdeen, Belkamp, and Perryman, neighboring communities in South Harford County that account for 86% of all the warehouse space in the county. Perryman's share of that is 9.8 million square feet. Of the more than 21 million square feet of large warehouses in Harford County, only 21,000 square feet of it is in communities that are north of I-95, despite the fact that the county's development envelope includes Route 24 past Bel Air. The next page shows a map of the location of county parks in Harford. Three larger circles are in North Harford, Havitt Grace, Bel Air, and Falston. The map doesn't show tens of thousands of acres of state parks located in western and northern Harford. The next page shows a distribution of warehouse space related to population. Community with the most warehouse space, Perryman, has the smallest population. Perryman has the most warehouse square feet per person, 3,971 square feet, 20 times more than the average for the rest of the county. The next page shows warehouse square feet per person by poverty level and median income. Perryman has the highest poverty rate, the lowest median income, and most warehouse space by a wide margin. If you skip to the next page, you can see a pie chart with the distribution of warehouses and freight terminals in the county, and see that if the freight terminal development at the Mitchell Farm goes forward, Perryman will have more warehouse space than the rest of Harford County combined. Now, to update the new council members on changes to the Mitchell property development, since this presentation was created, in August, a developer, Chesapeake Real Estate Group, covertly asked the planning and zoning department to change the type of development from warehouse with accessory use of retail service to high cube fulfillment center warehouse. This was followed by a new preliminary plan and site plan that increases the height of these warehouses by 62%. At the same time, the number of people in the larger shift was reduced to one-third of what was in the plans presented at the DAC just about one year ago.
Mr. Shannon, please bring your comments to a close.
So, you understand now why the people of Perryman are upset about this development in our community?
Thank you, sir.
We look for your help in trying to make this a more reasonable...
Thank you, sir.
...development. Thank you.
Glenn Gillis, followed by Ten Van Emden.
Good evening, sir. Name an address, please.
Good evening. Glenn Gillis, 1936, Park Beach Drive, in Perryman. First off, I want to congratulate the president and the council on your swearing-in as the new legislative body for Harford County. Congratulations. You've heard the citizens' concerns while you were on the campaign trail, promised them you'd do certain things to resolve their concerns, and were elected with the citizens' faith in you to fulfill those promises. Today, you begin your efforts to do the right thing for the citizens that elected you. While you have a significant agenda of legislative issues facing... While you have a significant agenda of legislative issues facing you, I'm here to remind you of the ongoing concerns of the citizens of the community of Perryman. We have spoken with the council both publicly and privately for over a year about the inappropriate Mitchell Frey development plans. The past administration and council have sided with a small but influential owner-developer group over the best interests of the Perryman community and its citizens, and frankly, the best interests of all of Hartford County's citizens that elected that council and administration. We pray that you do a better job representing us over the developers. We ask that you act to be a part of the solution to stop the legal development, take as a priority to fix and modernize the zoning code and development process, and to work with the Perryman community and the owner to find appropriate use and appropriate value for the land in question. Congratulations again, and thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, gentlemen. My name is Tim Van Emden. I live at 1963 Mitchell Drive, Aberdeen, Maryland. That's in Perryman. First off, congratulations to everybody. It's great to see you all. Welcome back, or welcome, as it were. Mr. Bennett, regarding your situation, it being what it is, I find the timing by the county executive to be a little suspect and kind of reeks of political hackery. Mr. Casely, we, the voters of Hartford County, deserve better. Please be better, sir. Please use this as a stumbling block. Mr. G. N. Giordano, how are you doing, sir? There was a lady who made a comment on the Perryman Facebook page back on October 20th. I tagged you in that on both October 20th and October 27th. Finally got a response from you. Probably had a bad day, it is what it is. I sent you an email. You suggested I send you an email. They had a little back and forth because there was a little confusion with one of the other Maryland sites. They're not using your actual email address, because as we know, Tony is short for Anthony, so they're going off your full first name as opposed to Tony. But I sent you an email on November 4th. Still haven't heard a response, so I'm going to ask you here, how do you respond to the homeowners within Perryman, who when we go to sell our house, we have all these signs up, "Stop the Perryman warehouses, no more warehouses," all this? Anybody does a little bit of research, anybody with half a brain is going to run away screaming from these houses. At what point do my rights as a homeowner come into play? Because I can't sell my house if I wanted to because of this proposal. Do I not have rights? I'd love to hear not just your response, Mr. G. N. Giordano, but everybody, especially since we have so many new council members. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
George Kasnick, followed by James Carr.
Good evening, sir. Name and address, please.
Mr. George Kasnick, 609 Green Street, Havant Grace, Maryland. I'm the District F Dean, Mr. President and Councilperson. As captain of the 1st Infantry Division of West Germany in 1989, I witnessed the fall of the Roanoke Warlock, the Iron Curtain coming down, and victory for democracy, a visceral demonstration of the power of the voice of the people to effect change. In 2004, in the Battle of Iraq, I witnessed Iraqi citizens proudly displaying their purple state fingers, who divided and voted in a free and fair election, an easy way to enforce one person, one vote, in a country devoid of technology and recovering from war. Feeling satisfied to be a part of providing an environment for people we counted was affirming bringing American values and beliefs to the world. As an officer, as a veteran, as a citizen, as a voter, never did I believe I would witness the debasement of our democracy in my home in Hartford County. Yesterday, my duly-elected representative was denied the forum accord to all other duly-elected representatives. This was wrong, and it was wrong on many levels. It demean my voice and the vote of all citizens in District F regardless of how they voted, having the councilperson we chose treated as lesser than other councilpersons. This brings shame to the pocket of county councilors whole. I question why any of you chose to take the oath with one of your duly-elected colleagues absent. Mr. President, you're a constituent of District F, as am I. I wondered that you would accept such a muscling of your voice and representation. It demeans the council to have the executive branch of the county government dictate such an exclusion to another branch of the legislature without so much as a murmur. Regardless of your political party or philosophy, accepting such an edict from the executive branch applies poorly upon your understanding of the separation of powers, the operations of the county government, and your duty to those you work for, voters like all of us in District F. I encourage you to do better. I encourage you to accept the choice of the people. I encourage you to work with all council members, realizing that Jacob Bennett represents District F and 16,000 voters in the county. We have a voice and expect to be listened to in council. Mr. Bennett is our voice. I give a platitud, thank you for your service for politicians all the time. If you truly want to thank me for my service, honor our democracy, and your oath, I welcome Jacob Bennett as a colleague, listening to him, and accepting him as the voice of all residents in District F. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, sir.
I am James Carr. I live at 715 Chrystie Michelle Court in Middle River, Maryland. Although I am not a resident of Hartford County, I am a resident and voter in the 5th District of Baltimore County. I'd like to point out, as my understanding, that the statue that is dealing with Jacob deals with is exactly written the same in Baltimore County. My councilman is David Marks. He is about to start his fourth term and has been a teacher the whole time. At one point, Johnny O. served on the county council while he was a teacher at the Tapscul High School. My basic point is that although the laws are in the same in both counties, obviously Baltimore County sees it a different way, and I would hope you'd be open enough to reconsider your position. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Jillian Miller, followed by Delane Lewis.
Good evening. Jillian Miller, 408 Chrisfield Drive, Abingdon, Maryland. Wanted to say welcome to the new members of the county council. Councilman Guthrie, I'm glad you enjoyed fair treatment. Councilman Pennman, I'm glad you enjoyed fair treatment. Councilman Riley, I'm glad you enjoyed fair treatment. Councilwoman Jessica Boyle-Sodles, I'm glad you enjoyed fair treatment. Councilman Bennett, I am sorry you did not get fair treatment. I wanted to start by saying how disturbing it was to watch the council inauguration while a member of the new county council was clearly absent. There was no statement given or even a mention of why. It was a blatant robbery and silencing of those who went out to cast their vote for that council member. It was a clear indicator that the good old boy government in Hartford County is still hard at work. To this, I want to say to the members of the community that are watching, there is absolutely no reason to trust Hartford County government. It is clear that you are better off making the changes to our communities on our own. The previous administration has done nothing but pander to their network, and it seems as if the new one will do the same. The best interests of community members were never a concern, as we see through the continued lack of anything implemented that has been requested. To those who still do not have accessibility to participate in the life of our government or even a virtual input option, my apologies. To those who can't retain full-time employment due to lack of public transportation, my apologies. To those who continue to be unheard and unseen through our government officials' eyes, my apologies. It is all of our responsibility to make our community inclusive for all. You matter to me, even if you do not matter to this council. If a group of government officials can sit and take an oath while simultaneously breaking that oath from the very beginning of the administration, then you should know how you will be represented and be very concerned. How can the county council serve duly as our Board of Ed and not know the Hartford County participation in the political process by employees' policy? How can we trust that you all are researching anything you present to us? No one is screaming foul play, no pun intended, at the large amount of funding the Deco Museum gets from our government, other than Councilman Perron back in 2018, nor the potential contracts AAG receives through government networking? Since there was so much prayer in yesterday's inauguration, let me share this with you. Woe to those who scheme inequity, who work out evil in their beds. When morning comes, they do it, for it is in the power of their hands. To you, council, I say, imagine if your loved one was being treated the way you treated your fellow council member. I pray that people in the community treat you and your family members with more decency than you have your own. Councilman Bennett, I thank you for your heart and for being a decent human being, because Lord knows, the county government needs one.
Thank you, ma'am. Good evening, ma'am.
Delane Lewis, 2714 Pemberton Ridge, Baldwin, Maryland. Tonight is the first Hartford County in council session with newly-elected members. Welcome. I think many of us, no matter what party we identify with, hope that the last election cycle would reinforce that no one is interested in your traditional Hartford County backroom politics. For all of us, the election fraud claims that are thrown around so freely and without substantiation, the efforts of the recently-elected county executive to deprive the constituents of District F, their elected representative, is disgusting and anti-American. Even more disgusting is the failure of the rest of the members of the county council and the county president in their deference to the county executive, who had not even been sworn in at that point. The question is, are you actually an independent body? Are you simply lackeys for the county executive like the last council was? There is a long-established opinion of the Attorney General dating back to 2016 that a teacher can hold a position on a county council, similar body, that does vote on budgetary matters for the school district because that person has no authority over the system and will not be able to directly affect even their own personal matters of pay and employment policies. To quote from that opinion, "County governing bodies lack the power to appoint, remove, or supervise school board employees. And while the county commissioners ultimately approve the local school system's budget and fund it in part, the county commissioners, in this case, do not set individual teacher salaries." Mr. Frazier's two positions thus do not fall under the Hetrix Court example of a conflict that would create an incompatibility. Addressing a similar issue, the Attorney General of Kansas concluded that the incompatibility doctrine did not bar a local school board employee from serving on the State Board of Education because the state board did not supervise the employee and did not either set the employee's salary or the employee's duties. Many other jurisdictions across the country have determined that being a teacher or an employee of the public school system is not profiting, nor offers a conflict of interest. Even the Federal Employee Hatch Act exempts teachers from its restrictions. The language of the Hartford County Charter itself does not prevent this. Mr. Bennett is not an employee of the government of the state of Maryland or the government of Hartford County. He is an employee of Hartford County Public Schools. Hartford County has had past educators represent them. Mr. Sluski's been referenced previously. There is no conflict of interest here. The voters are the only arbiters that Mr. Bennett needs to worry about. Please make sure he is able to represent his constituents.
Thank you, ma'am.
Emma Peller, followed by Jody Fry.
Good evening. Emma Peller, 1447 Redfield Road, Bel Air. Good evening, council, and thank you for the opportunity to speak with you. I want to first congratulate you all and echo everyone else on your wins that brought you to the council today. You have been chosen by the voters in your respective districts, and I hope you will fulfill your duty and serve them to the best of your ability. This is why I am especially dismayed at the start we've gotten off to. By using the tax dollars of your constituents to fight a legal battle in order to challenge an elected council member, you are showing the true colors of this administration and of this council. I would like to remind you all of the definition of disenfranchisement. To deprive of a franchise, of a legal right, or of some privilege or immunity, especially the right to vote. By trying to remove Councilman Bennett, you are effectively throwing away the choice and the vote of the constituents of District F who have elected him to represent them. The council should turn their time, attention, and taxpayer money to issues that will serve Hartford County, like improving our transportation system or our infrastructure, creating diverse executive and legislative branches that will reflect the diversity of our county, or making your meetings truly accessible to all by offering a virtual option for public comment, as has been discussed here many times before. Please get to work on actually bettering the county that you serve and not on wasting resources. Thank you. Good night.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening. Jody Fry, 408 Cub Hunting Court, Bel Air. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. Congrats to everybody on your successful elections to the board. Thank you for your service to our county. As a resident of Hartford County, I unfortunately remain often disappointed by the politics that take place behind closed doors, the non-transparent decisions that end up treating people unfairly and result in disenfranchising communities and our neighborhoods, further depleting the trust that everybody, like voters like myself, are losing every day in some of our elected officials. So I'm here tonight to speak about Jacob Bennett. I don't live in his district, I'm in yours, Tony G., but I've been impressed with Mr. Bennett over the past year. I've had opportunities to meet him many times. He is very involved in the commitment to our county and has a passion to continue to stay active in all of our communities. It's come to my attention, as many of you here tonight have referenced, that there are concerns raised regarding the interpretation of the Howard County Public Schools policy title, "Participation in Political Process by Employees of the School as Well as Council Charter 207." It's my understanding that's been publicly made that Mr. Bennett has sought legal consultation prior to running for office, and as we've all seen on his signs and his campaign materials, he is a proud teacher, one of the reasons many of us have entrusted him to be up there with all of you tonight. In fact, across our great state, we have a number of upstanding people serving their county while also working for the schools. David Marks in Baltimore County was mentioned, and as well, Lisa Rodvian in Anarundel County. It was confirmed prior to his entering this election race by Maryland General Counsel as well as Hartford County Public Schools that Mr. Bennett is in fact not in conflict to serve in public office, and the voters of his district clearly support him being seated up there with all of you tonight. His employer is the school board, a separate public entity than what is named in County Charter 207. Furthermore, I don't think that the council should be deciding behind closed doors what happens with Mr. Bennett and the voters' rights for him to hold office. They should seek this in full, open transparency. They should not be in a position to interpret policies since we know that they cannot without bias. Let's end 2022 on the right side of history, guys, and not start off on the wrong foot here and disenfranchise District F as well as further staining the great reputation of our great county. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Brian Burby, followed by Bill Whalen.
Good evening, council members. Councilmember Guthrie, Councilmember Pennman, Councilmember G., Councilmember Riley, Councilmember Sossels, and most importantly, Councilmember Bennett and Council President Vincente. First, I want to say it's been mentioned that Jacob is a teacher. Jacob is a great teacher. He's not just a teacher, he's an outstanding, acknowledged, recognized teacher, and he's going to do that, the same thing, on the council. And Jacob, when you run for county executive and win, you don't have to quit your teaching job then either if you don't want to. What I really want to make clear is, I know many of you, all right? Dion, you've been a union organizer most of your life. Aaron, you are a Marine. Pat, I have no question your universe, your honor. James, you married me not so long ago.
How'd that work out?
Not so great, but it was good while it lasted. This is going to be par for the course for the next four years. This is par for the course for the next four years, guys. You're going to have to grow a spine, and you're going to have to stand up to the bigotry and utter insanity that is sure to flow from across- and utter insanity that is sure to flow from across the street. It was going to be that way either way. I mean, you had a choice of one or the other, and both this was going to happen. But you all are going to have to be the same people in the room. You're going to have to. And, you know, Harford County has a real horrible history of disenfranchisement. You know, we were one of the last school systems to fully integrate kids. 1971, or '76, my kindergarten class was the first fully integrated class at what used to be called the Colored School in Hickory. All right? This is the same kind of crap. Why does it matter? Five to two still wins. Every single vote, even the overwhelming majority ones. It is utter insanity, and that nonsense of not including him in the swearing-in, that is foul and repugnant, and it will come back on you. They will do the same to you. You will be under their thumb, and if you learn nothing from working with Mr. Bonifus for eight years, you should know that. Please, come to reality, come to sanity. Don't waste our money on this nonsense. Don't waste your reputation on someone else's foolishness. Great things could be ahead for us. We actually have a sane school board. We have probably the best superintendent in the state. We've held things together through a time where other places have come apart. But if we go down this narrow-minded political rampage that it started off, you're going to lose everybody. Whether you believe it or not, we all still reside mostly in the middle. You're about roads, schools, public safety. That's it. That's all there is. Everything else, leave out there. And those of you who think this is the worst that it's ever looked, it is not. I've heard multiple ramblings about things that I couldn't even imagine coming up in a county council chamber here.
Mr. Burby.
Please, though, folks, let's not go backwards.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Name and address, please.
Bill Whalen, 415 Cedar Trace Road, Bel Air, Maryland. Good evening, Mr. Vincenzo and council members. I'll pass congratulations to each of you on your elected positions on the council. I know Mr. Vincenzo very well, I know Mr. Tony G., and I know Mr. Guthrie from the past. I have not had the pleasure of meeting the remaining members representing B, D, E, and F. By way of introduction, for those who don't know me, I've been an advocate for the rights of citizens for well over ten years. I've attended and spoken at many council legislative sessions, written to administration leaders or staff, and council members. Over that period of time, I've tried to attain the group understanding of the county charter, the zoning code, and government processes and procedures. Mr. Casely, in response to questions from friends of Harford during his quest for the county executive, stated that over the past eight years, we witnessed a reckless interpretation of our zoning codes and that the public deserves better from their elected officials. I concur, and I've been personally witnessed and experienced the lack of transparency, accountability, credibility, and integrity in the past administration. It's my belief and hope we will see these essential qualities restored under new administrative leadership. I also believe there will be improvements in communication and cooperation between the administration and the county council. Most recently, I had the pleasure and opportunity to be a member of the county executive's transition team. This involved the planning and zoning department. We discussed during those meetings, department functionality, development review issues, zoning enforcement problems, comprehensive planning, adequate public facilities issues, Harford Nets, and many, many other items, all needing improvements. Our team consisted of ten people with diverse interests, all trying to make things better. A report with recommendations for immediate actions, short-term actions, midterm actions, and long-term actions was sent to the county executive yesterday. I know each of you ran for office for different motives, reasons, desires. It could have been for making improvements and additions within your district, improvements to the infrastructure, the roads, the schools, the hospitals. Perhaps there's a concern, as I have, over overdevelopment and traffic congestion that's affecting our health, our safety, our morals, and our quality of life. Education could be a top priority. It's understandable that each of us have our own self-interests, and although you represent citizens in your particular district, it's really my hope that the decisions you make will be in the best interest of the majority of the citizens in Harford County and just not your particular district. You guys have a tough job as council members, and it will take a great deal of your time dealing with many controversial issues and citizen complaints. Mr. Vincenzo, you know it's a 24/7 job, and it involves your family. I'm going to close with just quick comments. Understand the basics of the charter. There be changes, be responsive to questions encouraged from citizens.
Mr. Whalen.
Okay.
Please bring your comments to a close.
I will. And don't be influenced by others and make your decisions based on factual data. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
And good luck.
Thank you.
The last speaker this evening is Barbara Kramer.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else?
There are no more speakers, Mr. President.
All right. Business from the present. Obviously, I want to congratulate all the members of the council, look forward to serving with them. I do believe all of them are absolutely serving for the best interests of the citizens of the county, and I look forward, like I said, working with all of them. Adequate Public Facilities Advisory Board meeting, December 8th, 2022, 6:00 PM, 212 South Bond Street, second floor, County Council Conference Room. Anyone's -- it's open to the public, so anyone can attend. And with that, I'd like to go to comments from council members. Mr. Bennett, if I may, I'd like to start with you.
Thank you. Hello, my name is Mr. Bennett. Some call me Mr. Jacob. First, I just want to thank the City of Havity Grace for welcoming me in their Holly Jolly Fridays Parade last week. It was an honor to go down the street and to see so many of my neighbors. My wife and I live on the 600 block Bourbon Street. It's very easy to tell which house is ours because it's actively falling apart after a year of campaigning. But I also want to make sure the community is aware that this entire month, for the next two Fridays, they are hosting Holly Jolly Fridays in Havity Grace. It's a great time to get together as a community. It's also a great time to shop local and support your community. You know, when you buy local, it's a gift that goes two directions because you're supporting your neighbor and giving a gift. I also just want to make sure everyone's aware of Toys for Tots, Harford County. You know, they're actively collecting toys at dozens of locations. I checked their website, it's over 100 locations, but you know, go to their website to find a place near you and donate a toy, or contact Craig Reeling about a way to support them as they go through this work. It's a big undertaking. I've had an opportunity to speak with them throughout the past few months, and I know they've been working since August and September on this. And, you know, no child should stop believing in Santa because of the wealth of their family. I also want to thank everybody who was able to come to my private swearing-in on Monday. It was really a joy and an honor and a privilege to be able to stand up with my wife as I was sworn in and to be surrounded by, you know, so many of my colleagues and organizations that supported me. You know, as a point of personal privilege, my mom's been -- my stepmom's been struggling with cancer, so she was unable to be there, but it was great to have so many people to join me in that. It was a special moment. I look forward to serving the people of District F and all the people of Harford County. All things in my life go back to my passion for wanting to take care of others because I was taken care of, and so I hope I'm able to do that in the next four years.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Ms. Sossels?
Good evening, everyone. I just wanted to say thank you for the support you've given me. I'm very excited to serve on the council. I look forward to getting to know more of the constituents in my district. I've been able to do that over the past two years, and it's -- I'm very excited to see what the future holds. I look forward to working for all of you and this county and hoping to make it better. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Riley?
I want to thank the voters of District G, and also looking forward to working with my colleagues here on the council. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Mr. Janardana?
Thank you, Council President. First of all, I'd like to thank everybody for being re-elected in four years. It certainly is a humbling experience to be up here, to learn, to work with other council people, hear their inputs, hear the citizens' input, and try to do the right things. I actually did the largest parade in Harford County, the Bel Air Christmas Parade, on Sunday. If nobody's been to that parade, it is jam-packed full of people, so was glad to walk the parade and see the parade. On top of that, one of the groups I'm involved with, we started giving out 12 Days of Christmas, $1,000 to each, to organizations that current members suggested that they wanted some money to go to. Although it's $1,000 to a lot of these organizations, it certainly is a major grant for them. We decided this year that we had enough money that we were going to do 12, and we actually had four alternatives, so we're going to do those two. So we're going to give out a total of $16,000 all around the county. So far, we've done two. I'm glad I was able to get to one of them, which is the Man House in Bel Air. So each day or every other day, we're going to try to get one in, so I look forward to that. I've had the opportunity to sit with Mr. Whalen on a couple -- on some issues with building in Bel Air. We certainly looked at what's going on. We wanted to try to make sure that he was involved and agree on a piece of land that's been zoned since the 80s to build. I'm continuing to work on that. I've gone with -- to see that. I think there's no warehouses in Bel Air because if anybody's driven down 24, it's all apartments and shopping centers. And if you've seen the traffic on 24, it's ridiculous, okay? And that's one of the things he's talking about. 924-24, the traffic is horrendous. We've had apartment complexes be built up and down 24, all across. It's not easy to get around on a daily basis if you live and work here, so hopefully somehow we can work on that. I'm glad he was involved in the transition team and part of that. What else? I think that's about all I have to say, so thank you, Council President.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Pennman?
Thank you, Council President. I want to first thank the voters for believing and trusting in me to represent District B on the county council. As I said on the campaign, I will represent the district to the best of my ability and advocate for what's right in the district, in the county, and not my personal interest. And I'm looking forward to getting to work. In the future, I'll be utilizing my time during business from council members to address certain issues that come to light in our office. The first issue, for example, is excessive dump truck traffic on Old Mountain Road South -- Central, excuse me. Over the next few weeks, I'll be meeting with community members and stakeholders to determine the cause of the issue and the possibility for some mitigation and mediation to the issue. So I thank you all again. With that, that's all I have, Council President.
Thank you, Mr. Pennman. Now, before Mr. Guthrie starts to speak, Ms. Dixon, I want you to start that clock up there, because I don't want to be here all night. Mr. Guthrie.
Is he worse than Jim? Done. No. Yeah. Pat told me that when he met in his office tonight, he said, "Listen, you got a bad reputation for how long you've spent on a microphone at the end of the meetings," and so he's going to time me, so I'll keep it as short as possible. But I am back. I'm back. As most of you know, I served on the council from 2002 to 2014 for 12 years, and left the council and been out for the last eight. There was a couple of things on my plate that I hadn't completed, so that's why I ran back. Retired from my full-time job this past January 1, and a lot of people in the community said, "Hey, great, you just retired from your full-time job. Now you can run for the county, you know, and get back on the county council." So that's what I did, and I was surprised at the outstanding support that I got. I want to congratulate all seven members of the council here on their election. It's -- a lot of you have never run for office, you have no idea what it is until you run, and you would find out how many hours that you spend on a daily basis, anywhere from 12 to 18 hours a day you're spending running or counseling or talking to people on the Just a couple of things I wanted to mention. The Choppa Town Community Council meeting and the Edgewood Community Council meetings are both canceled for this month of December because basically the people who hold those appointed positions by the county executive don't have their positions anymore until the county executive appoints the people to the community council. So the next meeting, we hope, is in January when the county executive appoints the people to take those places. Also, I'd like to thank all my committee and all that supported me. They really put in some long hours, and I got to thank my wife because she was my -- she chaired it, and she kept me on my toes and kept me moving. And I got to thank one more person who sat out there on her poles, passed out literature, sat in her wheelchair, and did that, and she's my 96-year-old mother-in-law.
God bless her.
Believe it or not, and she was out there working too, and I guarantee, she got me a few votes. And so, thank you all. A pleasure to be here and will give it what I gave it for 12 years. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Guthrie, and once again, I want to thank all of you for your patience and understanding here this evening, and look forward to seeing you in the future. Ms. Dixon, with that, the meeting will be adjourned.
Yes, sir.